Do we need to ask first about making changes to the agenda before we do our discussion?
No, you can take a moment to set the agenda and then have a discussion. We don't have time. Move it around a bit.
I'll make a motion if you agree with that.
Second.
Which discussion? Casey McCallum.
Aye.
Angie McCoy.
Aye.
Kay Fel.
Aye.
Dee Prog.
Aye.
Deanna Chulson.
Aye.
Okay, celebrations and presentations.
Just something really fun to celebrate. The Teddy Bear Preschool Infant Toddler Center has really stepped up. Belina's done an outstanding job. We've been now contacted, there's several districts coming to see this infant toddler center because they're just amazed at how really Belina spearheaded this project and got this pulled together for our community and for our staff, for our youngest students. And now we have the Department of Ed, Colorado Department of Ed, sending a crew down to film a documentary, to create a documentary about this program. How did this come together? How is this benefiting their staff, their community, et cetera? In addition to that, not even two days after that, in the Colorado Education Initiative, CEI, which is a nonprofit entity in Denver, they collaborate with CDE, they reach out to Bill and Melinda Gates, another founder, to get money to bring into schools through the Department of Ed. They also want to do a documentary. So, we have, inside of a week, we have two entities coming down here, and so we scheduled them for the same day, so two birds, one stone, hopefully, and they can get all the interviews and all the filming that they want, that they need for this broadcast. And it's just really exciting because this story of the infant toddler center and Teddy Bear has just gone like wildfire across the state. It's really a popular topic and a lot of districts want to add kids to their preschools and/or add preschools, in some cases they don't have preschools, and it's just kind of waking a lot of people up across the state to the importance of early childhood education, how valuable it can be when it's done well at ages now down to six weeks on up, which is super fun. So that's kind of a neat celebration. They're coming on the 27th, right, the other this month, and they're going to be, between the two entities, they're going to be at the Teddy Bear pretty much all day. Do you have glory on that?
Yeah. It's something I felt we needed to do. I didn't think, my husband says, "What's the big deal?" And I go, "No, I don't know." But apparently this happens as a big deal. So, I just did it for us and it just kind of spiced us. Yeah. It's pretty cool. It's a little nervous.
I was gonna say, are you ready?
It's great.
It's wonderful.
It's great. Anyone who'd like to add? There's a sense to address the board, so let's get right to that. So, people have a, I mean, free can. Operation Graduation request. Okay.
Hi, I'm Tom, I'm a senior here at Delores, and I was kind of ball and told that I would be seeking permission for Operation Graduation to do a fundraiser beginning part of March that hasn't been set yet for a alumni basketball game at the high school. We're gonna have a general basketball sense, you know, with concessions and all that, multiple teams competing, and it's kind of a fundraiser that's gonna help us have an Operation Graduation that's not only successful and safe for students, but also allows a lot of us to kind of get a head start on college materials and life materials for those not going to college. And of course, we're seeking you guys' approval and for like the insurance coverage and all that for our players. And if you guys have any questions, please ask.
Will you let us know as soon as you have a date? Because I know a couple alumni that might be interested.
Yeah, so the date right now of what they, the unsent date is the ninth. However, that's kind of subject to change. And then, again, other subject changes, the price for the teams entering, which is gonna be a lot of where the money comes from for Operation Graduation, is gonna vary depending on participation and that of if they want to do like t-shirts for each team as kind of a memorial type thing for the tournament itself.
I think it sounds great.
We just, we just need the board's approval that we're okay to cover this, the players under our insurance.
I'll make a motion that we want to do that. I'll say.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Casey McCallum.
Aye.
Angie McCoy.
Aye.
Kay Fel.
Aye.
Dee Prog.
Aye.
Deanna Chulson.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Okay, San Francisco trip, people.
So John's not here, but I know a little bit about the trip. And he's taking how many?
He's probably doing a couple.
There's quite a couple. A dozen students, maybe more, maybe twenty?
I don't know the details, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's a trip to San Francisco during the last week in March. He's taking students out of state over three hundred miles. So that's why he's requesting board approval. And they're going to San Francisco. He teaches science seven days a week, so it's a science-related trip, probably the aquariums.
Exploratory.
Exploratory, yeah, everything that, I don't know why.
So then is that at the eighth graders?
It's middle school, yeah, so, so, yeah, that age group. And they are exploring opportunities to raise money for this trip, and they are here enough to go at the end of March.
And their transport is?
I don't know how they're transporting. I was really hoping he was gonna be here tonight.
He was, he stopped by the office early and said he was coming, but he had to also go to Cortez and back.
Oh, well, maybe we'll.
It was planned and paid for, and they got the.
Yeah, let's circle down this stuff.
Was it an accident or something?
Yeah, just.
Whatever.
It's the first time I've heard that since I've been here.
Just on the road from Cortez to here, there's a bus.
Are you coming home?
All right, calendar concerns, Eddie.
Hello, I'd just, I'll be the delivery man anyway, I work in the kitchen. I'm a parent, I'm a student here, and I'm a community member. I would just ask the board if we could table our vote on the calendar approval until the rest of us as classified staff has an opportunity to have a vote, a say on it. I have, there's some letters here from other concerned citizens as well, if I can pass them off to the board.
I need one minute to keep it sane.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I'm concerned, Renee.
Yes.
Is this related to the same?
Yes, some, kind of, not really, but kind of.
All right.
Thank you to the board for this opportunity to address you, Mr. Prog. My name is Renee. I work in the cafeteria as a food prep, and I'm a paraprofessional in the school library. I've been employed five years with the district. I am here to voice my opinion on the latest email concerning the proposal of two calendars for 2018-19's school year. I understand there are two. I'm not sure because the paraprofessionals, transportation, food service, and maintenance departments were not part of this latest email and survey. I would like a reason why not. I also would like to table the discussion of the calendars among the school board until all the above departments and paraprofessionals have been given the opportunity to respond. We have a voice, we'd like to be heard too. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on to the student government report.
Do we have any buddy from student government here tonight?
Oh, yeah, hi. No, I came in late, is it okay if I take my three minutes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't know why I missed.
It's because I wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, well, okay.
I guess it's okay.
I'm sorry.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Rocky, I'm from the Delores Chamber of Commerce, I also serve, Scott is on my board, and I also serve with the Cortez Chamber of Commerce as well. And we are having our annual banquet coming up March 10th, Saturday. This banquet is, in part, funds scholarships for Delores High School graduates. So far this year, we will be funding up to our fifteen thousand dollars total so far since we started doing this five years ago, six years ago? I can't even remember.
Since I got here, sorry.
So basically, since I started four years ago. And so it's really great, I invite you all to come, you community members. It is a sci-fi square, so we're expecting aliens and such, and we have a crowd that comes and dresses up, and it's awesome, and it's a lot of fun. Thirty dollars a ticket, fifty for two, one hundred and eighty for a table of eight. If you're interested in going, my board member will be happy to sell tickets to you. So that is all I'd like to present to you tonight. Thank you guys very much. Do you have any questions?
I'm also a board member.
Yes, I'm sorry, so is Deanna, who's now, well, I didn't see you today, so I didn't want to like put you on the spot for tickets, so.
We didn't have any from the student government.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we move our action items up underneath Citizens to address the board, rather than being at the end of the agenda. And that would mean items, school-based health clinic, the calendar, the policy meeting and transportation. Yeah. Discussion on board members. Following Citizens to address the board. Number six.
So, so what he's asking is the discussion on this section of discussion.
Didn't we approve the agenda?
We did, and it wasn't brought up at the.
Yeah, you asked for discussion.
I did, I did ask for that at the, when we did the discussion, the agenda, that's for the changes to the agenda, and I asked for that, it was in the motion.
Okay.
So that's where.
So we're stuck with this up there? There's no way to move this up? I always default to board to do whatever they want, the majority, the majority wants to do something, just do it. But you're right, the rules are, you're supposed to make your change when you have the approval of the agenda in the beginning of the, because you're setting the agenda for the rest of me, and that's a good time, well, that's when you're supposed to move things up. But I always default to, if the majority of the board wants to do something.
If the action items, is there anyone here that is involved with the action items that would be waiting? It doesn't appear to be.
They don't have any new hires, right?
Okay, and we've got. No, just move the school calendar. And that's part of what, that's part of the discussion, that's our discussion.
Yeah, they would move these things to all the earlier.
Yeah, I have nothing against, and I'll say two because I'm thinking efficiency. Kind of a lot going on, so, no. I have nothing, no objection to that. I would like to know, I would like to take that as stands and ask for a second if there is a second.
Oh, a second.
Thank you. So, let's move right into our discussions. Oh, I'm sorry. Angie McCoy.
Aye.
Kay Fel.
Aye.
Dee Prog.
Aye.
Deanna Chulson.
Okay.
This will hold for a little while, so bear with me. Okay, discussion among board members. First is the school-based health clinic.
Okay, I would like to suggest that this go to an executive session, just because it has some potential legal issues. I would explain that to you.
So is that, do I ask for a second?
You'd have to get a second, the majority would have to say that.
Do I have a second? Since I don't have a second, can we go on with our discussion? Is there any specifics that want to be discussed about the school-based health clinic this evening?
Not that I would feel comfortable talking about outside of an executive session. So, I've got nothing to add, it doesn't go anywhere.
And I'll just say one thing, today I was in a meeting in Durango, and over lunch, I said I had schoolwork tonight, and so I'm just out of curiosity, said, "Well, what are you talking about?" And I mentioned school-based health clinic. This person, she used to live in Avon, and she said that it was remarkable, the increase in student attendance and achievement when the school-based health clinic went in across from the elementary school, that it was, the difference was seen within a year of positives from having that clinic there. And I just thought that was, that was cool to her.
I know some of the concerns are about the availability of under-seconds. And I know, and I agree, I think parents should be there, just talk to their kids about it. But when I'm in a local grocery store, and one of my seventeen-year-old employees comes into the store and asks for over-the-counter birth control pills, she's not getting something somewhere. I talked to her later and told her she needed to talk to her parents, too. I was astounded because she was seventeen and she was looking for over-the-counter birth control. For her face, or hat, or hat, you know what she told me. I, I just think sometimes these kids can go someplace where they can get some information.
The architect's room is done, that's my report, and it'll be going out to bid for the construction here fairly soon. The goal is to break ground by spring break. And have it, the big goal is have it open by the start of the semester for the students to come and staff over to start.
I'm very excited about it.
Me too.
I know that students feel supported in more ways than just academic.
You know, although I had my reservations from in the beginning regarding it, I'm feeling much more excited about it, and, and the enthusiasm from the community as a whole, it's been really positive, and there's been a lot of people reaching out, asking, wanting this. So I think it was overwhelming support for it, so it's exciting. Any other discussion?
Do we do have McKenry here now?
Right.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
No problem, John, can you come up and, and give us some details?
Can I sit or do I sit?
You can sit or stand, it doesn't matter.
My name is John McKenry, eighth grade science for Delores Middle School, and I am here to ask you, ask your permission to take some of your students to California for a spring break trip. Mistake has been made by myself, and Mr. Cooper was good enough to give you permission to allow you to ask for this. I set up a World Strides organization to take a science-based trip to California where we'll see Yosemite, Yellowstone, or not Yellowstone, Redwood Forest, we'll go to the Monterey Bay, we'll go to the Science History Museum, and we'll spend a week out there. I have six students that have signed up for this, and the mistake was made on my part. I think last year I looked at one calendar and thought our spring break was on back in the March, and when we come to school this year, I look and learn the third week of March, and I have six committed students that want to take this trip, and so I went to Dr. Cooper and asked for permission and said, "Hey, this is education-based, so I'm here to ask the board for your permission to take Delores students to California on a science-based trip." I did have itineraries here, but the company sent me to Hawaii. I wish that was the case. So I just opened it up and realized I grabbed the wrong itinerary. So, we would be leaving the last weekend of our spring break, which is the 23rd, it's a five-day trip, and we would be back possibly to, we'd be gone possibly four days of school, provided in our, our weekend, we'd be back in school on Friday.
How was you, were you trying to do the transportation or are you?
No, this is all provided by World Strides. So, the only transportation would be to get to the airport, it's based on current, so that would be the only transportation we need to coordinate with.
And you can form me if that, please.
I think parents are gonna drive, there's one six.
Yes.
The big permission thing here, the policy states, three hundred miles and out of state, those are the two big things.
So it's just the permission to.
Out of state and the three hundred, so even when they go to Denver, the teachers may come and ask for taking school with them.
I'd love to see the itinerary and we can get.
Absolutely, I apologize for not having it.
Next time invite us.
Oh, really?
And you're not going to fix Florida?
I am, yes, I am. Yes, I am very much looking forward to this.
That's great. And is there fundraising or families?
You know, I put it out to the families, being that I am a basketball coach, and we've been through this before, some families just want to pay us, some people want a fundraising. So I did put that offer out to those families if they wanted to, and we did, and then I had one family member ask, and I said, "I would do anything needed to be, I'd do the big work, I'd get it set up if we wanted to do concessions for any basketball game and set up." Just right now I'm in my own basketball season, so I physically could not partake in the fundraising portion of it.
Imagine the parents for it.
And I put that out to the parents to see if they wanted to, or if they just want to go status quo, but everything's paid right now, everything's done. It's just whatever pocket money they would like to have.
And so the ask for us and the permission?
I'm just asking for permission, yes.
I'll make a motion, have we grant John permission to take these six students on this trip?
Second.
Casey McCallum.
Aye.
Angie McCoy.
Aye.
Kay Fel.
Aye.
Dee Prog.
Aye.
Will you share something?
Yes, absolutely, we'll come in and share it, and I'll be glad that, that's what the hope is, is that these six students come back and just excited as can be and share it, so. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to be a teacher in the school district, I enjoy my job, and I have fun at it.
Okay, 2018, 2019 school calendar.
Yeah, so this is a big one, we've been working on this for four months now, it started back in October. If you remember last year, about this time, the board directed me to start early, a lot of feedback, put surveys out there, have a committee, all that stuff. So we've done all that, and we've asked everybody through surveys, students, staff, classified, certified, admin, parents, anybody we can reach out to, trying to get a lot of feedback. And we did that in the first round of surveys, and we went from initially, there were five or six calendar options, and very quickly it dropped down to three. And those three then circulated a bit, and we got a lot of votes. We even did, we posted it in front of all the schools with voting boxes and things like that, so everybody could cast their vote either physically or via email through the surveys. So we got all that information back, and if you remember, a month ago at the board meeting, this topic was up for discussion post-action, and it was nine o'clock at night when we got to it, and I said, "Look, there's a lot of information here." As you can see, between these three calendars, they're kind of split equally on the pie charts, two of the calendars were a four-day base, and one was a current, like our current five-day base, and the votes seem to be split between all three of those. So then there was a hundred and fifty-plus entries of information from, from everyone typed in or brought in their ballots, and of suggestions for calendars. So all that was gathered, and at the last official board meeting, we decided to table it because there was just so much to digest, so it'd give you a month to think about it. During that time, then, we retooled a couple of the calendars that seemed plausible, and the reason why I say that is because, one, is very much like what we're doing now, so that's a pretty safe bet, to just kind of find tuning that one, make sure it's gonna work, there's enough hours, everybody's got the time they need to start again time, and looking back at the suggestions, trying to be, trying to weave in as many suggestions as possible. So that, calendar number one was pretty easy to get organized, it's not much different than what you see this year and what you've seen the last three years. Then, calendar two, or number three is actually what it's called, that one's a hundred and fifty-day calendar, it's a traditional four-day-a-week calendar, it's very much like ninety of the one hundred school districts that are currently on a four-day school week, the closest one to us, that comes to mind is Mangus just did this last year. It's the traditional, like Monday through Friday, pretty straightforward. What's a little different about it, though? Oh, sorry, Monday through Thursday. What's a little different about it is that I wasn't comfortable going beyond four o'clock, and trying, I heard that loud and clear, there's a lot of concern about going beyond four o'clock. All these other four-day calendars go beyond four o'clock. So we looked at it and thought, we could squeeze in a few more days, so we wouldn't be in the one forty's, we're actually at one fifty, and so we can reduce the total length of the day, so we don't go beyond four o'clock, like Mangus goes to four ten or four fifteen, Cortez goes even a little later with her secondary folks. We have one bus drop, gotta keep all that in mind. So all the families, they come together to our schools at the same time. What we've been doing the last several years is the elementary starts a little bit later and the secondary, they don't need as many minutes of. than the secondary, they don't need as many minutes of instruction, it's fine if they get more, but law does not require that they have the same amount of time that the secondary has. So we get the secondary started right away, and the elementary has a bit of recessed time. Our hundred-mile club is very popular, and that's what they do. So it would still be, both of these calendars would still be very similar with that start-finish. So that's just a little bit of background. So now here we are, I, we took these two calendars and pitched them back out to all the certified staff, so these are all the professionals in our business, these are all the teachers, the principals, the counselors, anybody with a four-year degree plus a fifth year license. I wanted to hear back, this is a very tough decision to make, so I want to hear back from the pros in the business, the ones in the classroom, the ones that are the most effective when it comes to student achievement and making positive changes with kids, and I'm talking specifically about classroom teachers more than anything. There's no other indicator out there that is more impactful than my classroom teacher. So I'm trying to provide them the best, and that's what I was hoping for, getting this feedback from that group is, tell me what you need, what is going to be the most effective for the work that you do, how are you gonna make a difference with kids? We've got boost student achievement, we've got a boost student engagement, we've got it, you know, these are things that we're working on every year, school culture, all these good things, and so I solicited that feedback and got it, and got in, all that's in your board reports, there were several entries, and they actually voted between the two calendars, and as you see, the hundred and fifty-day calendar got roughly fifty-eight percent of the vote, and the calendar that looks a lot like what we're doing today, a hundred and sixty-two or a hundred and sixty-three days, had forty-two percent of the vote. So if you just look at votes, okay, the one fifty wins, maybe that helps with your decision. But I wanted to look deeper, and so I want to read through all the comments, and there's some good comments in there about why they believe this one fifty-day calendar is gonna be beneficial for the work they do. And so all those comments are in there, a lot of it is around uninterrupted, four solid days, a day for everything else that they need to do, the collaboration time, professional learning time, the professional development time, grading, the revenue, the planning, all that stuff, so they will still very much be working a full five days. A lot of those days, seventeen of those days are paid for in this hundred and fifty-day contract, there's a hundred and sixty-seven paid days for the teachers. So that was one comment. I dug a little deeper today because I want to know who, like, which teachers are really, really excited about these calendars, and it appeared that it's our younger generation of teachers, those in their twenties and thirties trying to start a family, they have a bunch of little kids, it's our next, our up-and-coming generation of teachers, they really want this four-day-a-week, hundred and fifty-day schedule. And the veterans are more popular with, you know, my kids have flown the mess, I just want more days with students, you know, I love what I'm doing, da-da-da-da. So that's what, I got into it a little deeper, and I thought, well, you know, if we're going to listen more specifically to these two groups, if you can't even divide them into two groups, you know, I'm constantly looking at attracting and retaining new teachers. There is a teacher crisis in this state, and really across the nation, but Cortez feels it, Colorado feels it more than ever. Only two thousand teachers came out of teacher prep programs last spring and summer, there were six thousand vacancies in the state. We're one of the lowest paying states in the nation, so we have a hard time recruiting outside of the state. Another point, Cortez the last couple of years had to start with vacancies, we've nearly had to start with vacancies, it's been scary close. Shiprock had a hundred and thirty-five openings last June, they paid very well, they pay off their student loans in a few years, you can be fully pensioned in their pension program in ten years, or if you did five, you're half-fessed too. There's a lot of competition out there, and there's fewer and fewer teachers. This is an attract and retain strategy. This hundred and fifty-day calendar will attract and retain more teachers.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So what, do you know the difference in the actual time? I mean, looking at days, a hundred and fifty versus a hundred and sixty-three looks significant. By adding the time at the end of the day, what's the difference in?
The time system, virtually the same, you have to have a thousand and eighty hours, and these are very, very closely the same amount of time. That's the other thing, when you look at student achievement, there's been studies done on this for quite a while, because we're up to a hundred and a hundred and seventy-eight districts on a four-day week, most of those are rural districts. There's no difference in academic outcomes for kids, whether you're on a four-day or a five-day. I think largely in part because it's the same number of hours on these calendars, you're still providing the same number of direct instruction hours, contact time with kids.
I've got a question, I'm a little bit confused by this data. When you look at the December calendar, that was approved by, and you got the community results and the educator results, calendar five, fifty-seven point one percent of the educators voted for calendar five, thirty-five point seven voted for calendar one, and only seven point two percent voted for calendar three. And when you narrow it down to two, it's amazing what happens here, if calendar three, which got seven point two percent of the vote, I mean, calendar one had five times more than that, and then all of a sudden, calendar three's, you know?
So you're talking about the educator vote?
Yeah, comparing the educator.
Look at the community, and look at everybody else.
Right, I'm just trying, the educator vote doesn't make any sense. I mean, all of a sudden, I'm saying calendar three had seven point two percent of the votes, and all of a sudden, and calendar one was ahead of it, and now it's just the opposite. So how did that, how did that happen?
So getting to the final two calendars, we took into consideration the community and classified and students and everybody and all of their votes. There was a lot of concern about that one calendar that was popular with mostly the secondary teachers, having the flip-flop between Mondays and Fridays, I believe that was calendar number five. Flipping Mondays off, okay, now Fridays off, now Mondays off, Fridays off. From purely an educational standpoint, okay, I can see that from that lens, that could work, but it doesn't work with families, and families were gonna be pretty shocked by that, as we read in the surveys there, so that one didn't make the final cut. And so then when two calendars were put forward to the teachers, those are the results that you have.
Okay, I mean, it seems like a complete flip-flop, which doesn't make any sense, but what seems like maybe a bigger problem is, it looks, when we narrow it down to two, it looks as though the community was completely left out of this. I mean, you've got a hundred and sixty-three responses in the, in the survey from the community, twenty-eight from the educators, and on this calendar, you've got sixty-nine responses. Did this? And I'm gonna just tell you, I mean, I've talked to people that didn't, didn't see another survey, so did this go out to the community again?
This is just, only the professionals in this business.
Don't they represent the community? That's, that's the issue I have with.
And that's the first round of surveys, that was for everybody to participate, and like, it's kind of a tough decision, I have to be among the professionals in this business to do what's best for kids.
But we, I'm assuming, we all think alike here, need to answer to the community, and what's best for the parents. I mean, I talked to, at the book fair day, you know, forty-five minutes ago, or whatever it was, an hour ago, I talked to a lady that said, what are we gonna do next year? Are we gonna go down to three days? She said, if we go to four days, I'm homeschooling my child, I'm done. She was just angry, just having to even worry about this. So I think, before we go anywhere with this, we need, we need a survey from the community.
And we have one.
But not with these two choices?
So you say what's best for the community? If we don't have teachers, that's not gonna be the community.
Okay, so you're saying that, that the teachers that are here now that are used to a five-day week, we're in January losing some teachers?
Every year, attracting and retaining teachers is harder and harder, and there's fewer and fewer teachers out there. This gives us a competitive edge while still maintaining high-quality academics, strong social-emotional cultures, it is a win-win all the way around. We're talking about the difference of twelve Fridays versus today's calendar and next year's potential calendar.
Okay, I looked at twenty-eight years' worth of student days, the average over twenty-eight years was almost one hundred and sixty-seven. The four, four out of the, four out of the shortest seven days over a twenty-eight-year period were the last four years. The shortest of all of them was this year, and all the while, our scores are going down. So it seems that maybe we should be adding days versus subtracting days.
We've gone in the rounds with the scores, it's statistically valid data, and I don't know how else to tell you that, but what I will tell you, there's no research out there that says more is better. It doesn't mean, if we do, until you get to two hundred, two hundred and twenty days of school, you're not gonna tip the needle on student achievement at all, between a hundred and sixty-five and a hundred and fifty, it's the same amount of hours.
All I'm saying is, our record, the four out of the shortest seven calendar years out of twenty-eight are the last four, while our scores are going down, I mean, is it a coincidence, or is there, is there something?
Our scores are not going down, and we've explained this a bazillion times.
So are we not in a turnaround? Are we not in a turnaround?
We should not be.
So is there a way we could also talk about the multiple measures and a little bit later, but also, maybe right now, could we revisit the, just the calendar right for a moment? I really, I found it really interesting to look through all of the teacher's responses, and I think I was expecting to find a little bit more about recruitment and retention, and what I found, I was, I was impressed by the thoughtfulness that they put into these responses, but a lot of talk about rigor and quality versus quantity, that was mentioned by a number of teachers, and let's see, staff will benefit from extra time to plan and prepare, as well as receive much-needed opportunity to spend time with their children and families, and then from a fiscal point of view, a four-day week cuts operational expenses, from a logistical point, we're essentially on a four-day week now with a few exceptions, and having a consistent calendar would help families. So the emphasis I saw over and over again in those comments were the families and rigor in the, in instruction, and quality over quantity.
Maybe we should hear from the community. This is all, what we're looking at here is just educating for that.
My understanding is that you hear from the community first, and then narrow it to the professionals, you know?
Who knows what's best for my child?
For instruction. I believe you should, and if that's the general feeling, that we should resurvey the community, and if we need to table, but I am, I'm really happy with the thoughtfulness that was put into the comments from the teachers.
And so what about the concern for, of the classified staff about not having as many hours?
Sure, let me explain. Every employee except for me next year will have a raise, and this is how it's gonna be done. Every classified person, see, it's not gonna be a fiscal savings, that's not why we're doing this, we're doing this to attract and retain teachers, that's what comes out.
That was the impression.
So, because if you go after the fiscal argument, it's so weak, and you're not gonna save hardly anything, so don't even go there. Every classified employee, say they make X amount of dollars, roll that salary forward and provide a step like you would in a normal year. That classified employee has twelve less days. All of a sudden, their next year's contract bumps up their hourly substantially, which has to happen, we have to get to twelve dollars an hour fast. Right now, we're doing double steps and other things, trying to get to the base twelve. If we do this, we jump up there much faster and have less pressure to get to twelve bucks an hour, and everybody still maintains the salary they're familiar with, and it'll still grow one step at a time as we move forward. And bus drivers too, people say, well, you're gonna have twelve less days of driving routes. We have to increase their hourly as well to stay competitive, so we'll have to look at those numbers and increase those hourlies so that their total year income is just a hair higher than it was this year. Everybody's gonna move forward a step.
Some of the things that Mangus had to do when they went into a four-day work week, there's a lot, a lot in this four-day work week. Right now, our salary schedule is based on a hundred and eighty-one teaching days, even though we don't have that many, that's what that salary schedule was.
Hundred and eighty-one contracted.
Yeah, hundred and eight, well, teacher days, hundred and eighty-one teacher days. So therefore, if you drop down, there's the discussion, does the pay scale drop down? I know Jen would be in favor of saying, no way in the world you're taking money away, but that's what the certified salary schedule is based on. So that's in consideration. As far as your paras and stuff, the double step isn't going to make them probably equal to what they are this year. I mean, it's, we're trying hard, but the paras will still probably be short. What Mangus has done is they do nine-hour days, because they, their teachers and paras and everything work every other Friday, is what they do. So if they work nine hours one week, the paras get that overtime. So next week, when they have the Friday off, they're short that week, but in the, in the end, it all comes out so that they don't lose money. But it's not an easy system to set up, but that's what they had to do in order to keep their classified people happy. The bus drivers, they still work a half a day on Fridays just so that they could get the hours, they go in and do repairs or clean the buses or whatever, but they were trying to make it so that the classified staff doesn't get the short end of the stick or whatever, but it's gonna cost money. They also took away leave days for some of the certified, in order, because they figure if they've got Fridays off, they can have some other appointments on Fridays, so they took part of that benefit away, which saves them money. The teachers do work seven-thirty to four-thirty in Mangus, so it's a longer day. They cut back on the amount of preparation days at the beginning of the school, school year, so I don't remember how many, we have, one, two, three, we have six days prep for the teachers before school starts, they cut it down to two, their teachers get two days before they start school to be ready.
What is that advantage? They have less days in school, how, how's that help?
So just a couple of points here.
It makes it budget-wise.
Real quick, a couple of points here, I'm not talking about doing it like Mangus did, we don't need to do that. We have a budget that has all these salaries in play. You simply roll all these salaries forward, one step, and all the hourlies jump up to meet that. I'm not talking about making them come in for half a day on Friday, or making them do X, Y, or Z to make up for that, we're talking about a substantial raise for our classified staff to do this, which we need to do anyhow, we have to get to twelve as a base. And I'm not in favor of short-changing teachers on the days they need to prep, they're gonna do that anyhow, they're gonna be here, we need to pay and honor that, so I'm not talking, so this calendar provides all that.
So you're saying the one step in the classified is going to make up for?
No, 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 okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's say a classified person makes twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Next year, they will make twenty thousand plus that quarter step. All the difference, and they'll have less days worked, all the difference then will be averaged out, all the hours.
When I do contracts, I do them by the day, so that's how I'm saying it.
So I will help you with that, to make sure the hourly gets high enough.
We can rewrite the way we do contracts, but right now I do them per day, and that's why I was questioning.
So the hourly's gonna go up. In fact, I figured out one group, I think it was the nutrition department, might be a dollar twenty an hour to make it happen.
You didn't let me know that they were gonna change the contract style, and that makes more sense.
The point is, I'm, this is not to decrease anybody's income, this is to provide a solid calendar that's gonna be competitive with our neighbors and our competition across the state, and this is, this is the recommendation, it's the one fifty calendar. That's what's on, on for your approval tonight.
But this is an educator's recommendation, this is not the community's recommendation.
The community weighed in.
They weighed in a month or two ago, I get that, but they were weighing in on this one. It says educators only, January two thousand eighteen. Okay.
It's a big decision.
It is.
And there are compelling arguments on both sides, and it's a pretty close, this was pretty close, so.
Can I just say something, please? I love my job. Tell me when to come to work and when I'm gonna work. I was here because I I was here because I have a voice. If you wanna send just me the latest email, please do. That's, I just wanted to have a say in that latest email. I am a professional. I don't have a degree, but I am a professional. And I just wanted to have that email sent to you. That's all. Tell me when to come to work, and I'll be there. I love my job. You guys decide the calendar. I do have a preference. Again, tell me when to come to work, and I'll be there.
I do, I do feel like, I don't feel like the community, they weighed in initially. I don't feel like they've had any opportunity, obviously, to weigh into this. I don't see a, I don't see a negative side to having community and other staff weigh in. A decision needs to be made. It's a hard decision, or a difficult decision with a lot of parameters, but I don't, I don't see a negative to having some, unless we have some timeframe we have to be specifically-
By March. On March, really, on March.
Sure, just to give us before spring break.
Then we'll meet again before spring break. It's, it's, yeah, to me too, is it, it may be surprising, once it is out there, you may be surprised by the fact that it could be that the community, the rest of the staff, the students, may align with the teachers' preference towards it. And I wouldn't, I actually wouldn't be surprised if that were the case, but there's no harm in.
I agree. And some of the things, like the number of hours being the same in the two calendars, I think that's important information for people to have. Because looking at the days is like, but when you add those extra minutes, if indeed they are the same and both above, you know, but I think that that information is really important for people to have, and it really does affect everybody.
Well, and in the, like you said, if you just see this, you don't know, but if you see, maybe if you do see a little bit about what the teachers in our community, what that means, what this means to them, what that advantage is. It's not just, "Oh, we get days off," or we get, you know, it's, there's some depth to it, but also just really explaining what that calendar means and what some, some of the research shows, or maybe some links to some research on it for people who want to investigate that more. Any calendar you're gonna have people object to, or people love, and I understand that, because I have a lot of feelings towards a lot of the calendars we've seen, but, but it's, you know, it's, I don't, like I said, I don't know if we give them the resources and information.
The document, the CDC document, the four-day school week manual, that's something that the community needs to see, to have access to. Do we have it on the website or someplace accessible?
My first public teaching job in the early eighties was at a four-day week. And I felt like I was very productive as a teacher. I felt like we used every minute. Those Fridays, that's when I went and got appointments for myself and my kiddos. And I did my prep on Friday and still had two days. And so, you know, I can definitely see the benefits. And now, raising a child in school, the thought of every Friday off is a little bit, you know, and so there are a lot of emotions involved in this. And, yeah, maybe waiting and really giving everybody all the information. We've been handed a lot of comments and information. I would like a little time to read those carefully.
May I ask, the first survey that went out was not a survey, it was the calendar one versus calendar three. Is that correct?
There were three surveys out there, one, three, and five, so.
But do we have a good feel for what the community's views on the three, or four-day week, calendar three, four-day week?
Majority, on those original surveys, the majority, if you look at the two four-days versus the one five-day, they were popular.
The four-days were popular?
Yeah, they combined, too. Because it was split all over the place.
Let me just give you the percentages here. Calendar one was thirty-eight point seven percent, was the five-day. Calendar three was thirty-nine point nine, calendar five was twenty-one point five.
So calendar five didn't make the cut.
But it was the overwhelming favorite for the educators in the first survey.
The seventy-one Monday, seventy-one, yeah, I just, I already wanted to, I don't wanna talk. Not one day. If you wanna talk about that, let's talk about all year round. Let's talk about that, if we're gonna talk about a tape Monday or something. Because that's just, that's just gonna rock people's world, I think, yeah. And I get it. I get why it wasn't popular, and, and, because that's tough, but.
One other thing, and I know we're not copying Makers, but one thing that's making theirs successful is they do provide a kid camp for elementary students. And they fund it. So, because that, that seems to be part of a problem when you go to a four-day week, work week. What do the parents do with working, you know, they're working and happy kids? So they do provide.
And where is the kid camp? Is that at the early learning center?
I don't know where it's at. I just know that Makers funds it. And they, they added a teacher and two subs to, they paid for that.
The school funds it.
The school funds it. I don't know where it's, if it's at the school or at the, whatever, but they do fund that.
I mean, I spoke to the principal of Makers just four months ago, and I asked her about their calendar. They love it, the community loves it, the parents love it, just saying.
Yeah, just saying that there's reasons that people love it, because they follow all the outdoor things, outside things that we would have to consider.
Yeah.
We could use our title funds to provide tutoring for students on those Friday mornings as an option.
I'd like to see enrichment. Right, well, there's that, there's that.
And the largesse problem is eliminated, you know, with the four-day, because the kids are getting home closer to the time parents are to the family. So that's good. And then, then there are, there's so many really great things you can do with it. I'm just, I'm wondering if, you know, part of the success in Makers is that it was really a community effort, so it might behoove us then to make sure that we've got, we've got that.
If you remember the newspaper article when that came out, it said fifty-three percent of their elementary parents weren't paid a little four-day week.
Oh, really?
Fifty-three percent.
Weren't, or weren't?
Were.
What about the children that come to our school expecting at least two meals a day, every day, that they're here? What are they gonna do on Fridays if they're not here?
And that may be a possibility, that we provide a breakfast-lunch program with some enrichment on Friday mornings.
That's something we need to think about.
Right, right, we need the community, though. That's, that's the point that, that it's, that's crucial. And so I think that's where, I think we're all getting at. We want, we want the community to support what we're looking at as, as the best option for our school. That attracting and retaining teachers, absolutely, is very, very, it's crucial for us, because we've been through this, and we've had our fluctuations, and it has been a struggle. And you don't wanna be the one looking for the last-second anything, you know, option. So you, it's, but, but again, I think as a community, if you, if you grow with an idea, although it's only one month away, but it's still, we've been working through this for a long time. If you can grow together with the idea, then all of a sudden, it's, what do we do with that Friday? And then maybe people see, well, there's some options that we can do with that Friday. If people come forward, or programs come forward and put effort in, and that's a-
Right, and I think that part of our problem is, is that we chose to have this board meeting on a parent-teacher conference night, where a lot of the community that I talked to couldn't come participate because they were over there. Same with some of the teachers, just for their opinions alone. I'm not saying one way or the other.
We can choose, this is our regular-
I understand that, I'm not saying it was-
We've done that two years, and we've already discussed, we're not gonna let that happen.
Yeah, and that's really sad. Because that's a problem for us. We can't be at our own-
Right, it's a problem for every single year to be involved when they both happen on the same night.
Yeah, and, and we do run into a lot of conflict when it comes to, there's so many activities.
I understand.
It's what we run into, being a Tuesday or a Thursday, it doesn't matter. We still miss out.
And that's why we asked if this could be tabled, so we can have further discussion with classified and with the community.
Yeah, I think I-
Well, and I just wanna say one thing, this is an amazing community. And I know when Cortez tried their four-day week, when they did that, that people rallied, and they had whirligigs, which was art and science and such that came together to give those kids something to do, and that, you know, we, if this is what we decide to do, I think that we'll be happily amazed at what our community-
Are they still doing the four-day week for this?
No.
Why did it fail?
It didn't fail, they just decided to go back when Mary Hurdoo came in.
Well, if it was successful, they wouldn't go back.
So it failed going back, and then they lost a lot of teachers, and morale went down. But once you go to four days, you can't go back.
You said, what, they went to a four-day week, they lost teachers? That's what you said?
No, they lost teachers when they went back. After four years, they went back to a five, and we were able to take our pick. I mean, it was a last exodus.
Well, I can understand that, too. But, so if we go to a four-day week, then we're never, because if we try to go back to a five-day, we lose our teachers. But in the meantime, do we lose our students that don't wanna do a four-day week to homeschool? Or to going back to Cortez where there's a five-day? And we've lost quite a few already.
We actually gained students this year over last year, and Makers gained a few this year when they went to a four-day.
Yeah, Makers definitely-
Right, well, we just closed-
That was, started, right now, our numbers were way down from the start of the year than they were. From the start of the year to now, there's fifteen, twenty.
I can see where we gained students as far as the, the-
October now?
No, 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 only this project.
In the sense of-
Yeah. But our enrollment in, as far as the kitchen, is quite, is down quite a bit.
They don't like that, please.
We're, we're used to serving four hundred students a day, and we're down to three-thirty, sometimes just barely three hundred.
But that also has to do with students who choose to, you know, who are, don't bring their lunch. You know, there are, there are a number of students who do bring their lunch.
There are, yes, but there always has been. But I mean, before, we're, last year, when we're pushing, I've got all the numbers. I mean, I record that every day, that's part of my job, as to keep track of how many meals we serve. And we're pushing four hundred on a regular basis, and then this year, we're significantly down. It's not just sat lunches.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until next one.
Before we vote on that, can we just see if there's anybody else that wants to say anything about this?
So, I think, I, I, the first survey came out for the calendars. And honestly, at that point in time, I wasn't in a position where I could go research everything and see everything that you guys are talking about, everything that you know about each individual calendar, hour, you know, hours every year, what was gonna change. So I voted. And I think that is the case with a lot of people. I don't, I think when these surveys are put out, there needs to be a lot more information, and I know Dee were saying that, that it needs to be right there for people to read and be able to make an educated decision on what calendar will work best. The pros and cons of each thing, because not, again, they're not gonna have the opportunity to research all of that information before they can make that decision. I've never gotten to a four-day week ever in my life, ever in any given, so that is scary to me. I've learned a ton tonight, and that makes me so much more educated to make the right decision. So if we're gonna put out in our survey, I think that information for everyone is very important. So it's easy to make the right decision, or the right decision for each individual person. Also, in working with a few different projects in the past six months, people are very concerned about involvement, and when you leave them out of any piece of that, like this last survey is just for educators, they feel like they're not a part of it, and they will attack. So they're automatically maybe gonna be more negative towards it, because they feel left out, and they don't have the information, they weren't involved. That's what I'm seeing from a lot of community members in a lot of different projects.
Can I mention something? I work at this district eighteen years, and I know, I think about the average school year is about a hundred and sixty-five. Okay? And so this, you've got your two calendars there. You have one at one hundred and sixty-two children, student days, and you have one at a hundred and fifty. Well, I did the math, I took the thirty extra minutes, because that's what it is, between, you know, three-thirty-five, I just averaged thirty minutes times a hundred and fifty. And I came up with, and maybe my math is way off wrong, I came up with seven, it would be an average of one hundred and sixty-seven, no, that's not right, one hundred and fifty-seven days. Now, I don't know where one hundred and fifty-seven is the same as one hundred and sixty-two. I'm just saying. We're in elementary, and our kids are wiped out by the time three-thirty-five comes around. I don't know how twenty, twenty more minutes is gonna be, is gonna provide a better education for our elementary students. And many teachers, certified teachers that I've worked with feel the same way, so.
I think that report would be helpful to send out. That is a concern that I've heard over and over again, that young children that were fighting fatigue by the end of, that's, that's rough, so.
My kid's usually gonna make it out like a parking lot before she's passed out in the taxi. Not even joking, like, I sent her in her car seat, I strapped her in, and before we get to the end of the street, she is out.
Have you heard anything in Makers about that, just about the younger students and how they-
I have good things to say.
I think if they do go to the longer day, especially for like our lower kids, my daughters, I can remember, like, incorporate like nap time or something in the classroom?
Yeah.
Because, like, if she goes to sleep when she does, when we get out of school, and she sleeps for an hour, and then it pushes their bedtime, and then she doesn't wanna go to bed. So if they can incorporate like a nap time or like downtime in the classroom during the day for that, right?
But it's, it's all funky, because our lunch times are all moved up an hour, so they're basically eating lunch like around ten o'clock, or ten thirty. And so it's pushed all that, and so everything is, it's the whole day is done, yes.
Yeah, and I think a lot, too, is more planning, maybe. There's so many unanswered questions, and it's like, what is this four-day a week gonna look like? Every single day, yeah, it's gonna be a change, if that's what's sort of on. And people need to see it, yeah, see all that, because there's a lot, a lot of planning.
How many years has Makers been doing this?
This is their first year.
There's really nothing you can go on for.
Well, Dove Creek's been doing it for a really long time, since the eighties.
Look at the numbers in their school too, look how far they dropped off as well, Dove Creek. Since they started that four-day week, look at the numbers before the four-day week, look at the numbers of kids that are going to school now. Look at their numbers, their numbers are down, I guarantee it.
I think kids don't have kids out there.
That's true, they have, but...
The numbers have changed, but they don't have...
But there's a lot of reasons, but I'm just saying, check the numbers, the numbers are gonna go up.
Um, and we've been, you know, we've, our, our calendars lean towards up many four-day weeks, and it has been doing that for a while. And, and it's, and it is a trend, and it's a trend in Colorado, and it's growing, and it's, um, already at seventy-eight?
A hundred districts.
Hundred districts out of a hundred seventy-six, so it's not, it's, and that's another, that's definitely another, um, fact to throw out there. You know, because it, it does make you understand that it's not just like, we just wanna, we just wanna be the first innovators of trying, but, you know, so it is there, and it's, and it's very popular across the state, I don't know across the country, but across the state it is. And in the country and other places I know of four-day weeks, um, that are successful, in Kentucky and Illinois, and that's all I know. So, all right, I need, we have a motion that's...
Yeah, we have also the question.
Called for a question, oh yeah, we already have a motion.
To table.
Jason McClellan?
Aye.
Megan G. McQuaid?
Aye.
Kate Bell?
Aye.
Dee Frog?
Aye.
Deanna Trulson?
Okay, and studying a policy meeting? Is there a suggestion from Lori on that?
Sometimes it's fun.
Thanks Lori.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm gonna suggest not February.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of board work is February.
And then our board meeting's on the eighth?
It's two hours, there's a lot to go over.
Okay.
Hope to do it like as a separate meeting, she was hopeful of a separate meeting and not like combined with a regular meeting.
So our regular meeting in, um, March is on the eighth, and April on the, is it the third? April on the twelfth?
Correct.
And spring break is in April, March?
Is there a time in April?
What's, what's the best evening right now at this point, because we have some evening stuff too, and... Yeah, I teach on Mondays, so Monday's not an option for me. And, uh, which one, what evening is not, if you generally...
Um, let's see, well, April is, but we, we have our professional exhibition, April...
Okay, would you guys like to, um, I don't want to just say the week as the board meeting, but, um, and I would like to not have it early after the first, so I wouldn't, I would say either around April third, or um, waiting it out till like April twenty-four, something like that. Or, or, or Wednesday, or...
What about Thursday the fifth?
So we have our board meeting, that's on the twelfth.
I could do the fifth, I could do the fifth.
And six, and five.
Possibly do, um, dancing, the horse and stuff. And can, can we do five, so we can...
We do it, I mean, it's the middle of the day, I have a special, you have a special board meeting for the budget.
It is, it is the middle of the day, yeah, but is five too, is five late enough?
Five on the other state.
Oh yeah, let's pick a... Oh yeah, sorry, I'm a little sorry, I didn't know we had that motion.
I'm in motion that we have a policy meeting for five percent.
Jason McClellan?
Aye.
Megan G. McQuaid?
Aye.
Kate Bell?
Aye.
Dee Frog?
Aye.
Deanna Trulson?
Okay, so Sheriff Allen apologizes for not being able to be here tonight, so to sunny and foul sort of see you guys. He said that, be sorry for not being here tonight, as it's his granddaughter Alana's birthday, she would've been thirteen years old today. So, um, he said, Alana would've been thirteen years old today, let's never forget the errors that were made, which contributed to loss of such a beautiful child, which is why we now have the proper protocol and procedure in place to help protect children in danger. Actions speak louder than words. The Colorado flag that was raised today over the state Capitol was from in honor of Alana, so. Um, he's out with his family, so, um, we have been so busy this month with, at the school. Um, I am researching the street planners, like the, you know, how like you have like the turn lanes that they like melt into the asphalt for the streets. I'm researching, um, those same, that same concept for school zones and for the drop-off lanes, so we can clearly mark the lanes going down Central. So people aren't at, um, confused as to like, oh, I think this is a school zone, and it'll have the speed. So we're, I'm working on clearly marking the intersections going down Central, hoping we can get that done here soon. And then clearly marking the drop-off lane, because a lot of people just like drive through the drop-off lane and then like merge into the east and west down. So, um, that is a work in progress. Um, we've had five suicides, that one's on the elementary side, but last month. Um, we've had two on the high school side, I, I did one for an assessment. I've issued three summonses, one was a minor possession, he was summoned, so he'll be going to court. We had a getting run on the elementary side, she was summoned and will be going into court, and then we had a harassment summons, and they will be going to court. So, um, I'm gonna try to get with Ms. Huffman and with Principal Wyback on sending out an email to address parents, um, with the bad weather and stuff that's coming in, I've noticed like the last few times that it's snowed, people aren't slowing down when the roads are bad, and they're not braking properly, so they're like sliding, and it could be very dangerous for our kids. So I'm gonna send out an awareness email for parents and students, hopefully in the next week or so. And then, um, we've had a lot of fake Snapchats being created. Um, you guys with teenage children who have Snapchat accounts, please educate your children with their social media. Facebook, Snapchat, Instagram. People are getting, like, these kids put so much of their personal information out there on the web, and it's so easy for people to lock or copy their profiles because they put so much of their personal information out on the internet. Um, so please help educate your children. Show them how to change the privacy settings so not everybody can look at their account or view their account, and then it'll cut down on the fake accounts being made. Um, if your child does wind up by having a fake Snapchat or Instagram account made, tell them you're not engaged in the conversations that these kids are trying to like engage, and then they're just a bunch of bullies, and they're trying to get a reaction out of them. You can basically tell them that this is being reported to law enforcement, bring it to my intention if it happens during school hours, or, you know, if it doesn't, but you still wanna talk to me, I'm more than open to talking with you guys, you just have to come and see me at the school or call me. And then tell them this is being reported to law enforcement, block them, and then report, there's an option in the settings to report it to the social media site, so. If we have more parents monitoring what their kids do on social media, it will really cut down on cyberbullying. Because it's literally impossible for me to figure out who's creating the Snapchat accounts. So I had, I can prosecute them, so, because it's literally not truthful. And the amount of evidence that I have to have to go to Snapchat, I'll never get. So, please help me educate the kids in proper use of their social media, but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
All right, good. Have a good evening.
You too.
It was kinda crazy timing to drive in around there, I had a guy backing up, and I was in the drop, and I dropped my kid. And as I dropped him off, he's backing up. I know, I saw that, I saw it. And then I started honking my horn, and then I started backing up, and he's still backing up, and I'm honking my horn, and he's still backing out. And then he went to this little parking spot he wanted. I was like, that was what it was about. I've never had anyone not respond to like, argh, you know?
I spoke to him, I, I did, and hopefully he'll be more aware of when he's backing up, like, if you have somebody behind you, you can't continue to back up the street. It's not safe, because if she has to back up the street, though. We're done.
All right, thanks. All right, thank you very much. Have a good day. Transportation building project, action.
So, this is something that's been on the agenda for a little while, we've been talking about a new transportation facility for some time. Um, and last month, I recommended we move forward with the standalone facility and go forward with Luminouch. And then, uh, just decided to be tabled for another month, and we did some more thinking on it, more discussions, uh, with, uh, some of you came up and took a look at the facility and walked around with Larry and me and, um, and checked things out. And so here we are again, um, with this discussion and this recommendation on the table. Of course, I expect there'll be some discussion and, uh, hope that there could be some decisions made tonight. Uh, because we would like to have this facility built in time for the next school year, ideally, I mean, sooner the better. And, um, so that's kinda where we're at, with this recommendation from last month still on the table. Oh, and for less than five hundred thousand, because you transferred five hundred thousand from the reserves into the capital projects at your last, at your business meeting, the budget approving meeting, which was just a couple weeks ago.
Okay, I'll, I'll start, because I handed out an estimate that I received from Case Construction. This was just for, uh, budgetary purposes. Uh, it's a hundred and sixty thousand, but it did include electric and water, that would add forty thousand to it. Considerably less than, uh, five hundred thousand. And I just wanna say that I certainly see the meaning for this, no doubt about it. You know, going up there, the building that, uh, Larry is working out is, is pretty rough. So it definitely, I agree with everything that he said, that, uh, you know, the, the value in it. Um, but, I guess I'm just concerned about spending too much money on this, and if we detach it, it's gonna cost us more, no doubt about it. Um, I think that we need to, if, if we're gonna be responsible about this, I mean, normally, I think what we would do if we were budgeting for something, you know, we would, we would put money aside for a few years rather than, hey, all of a sudden we need a new building. I mean, it's, it's probably not been, it's probably not been a big secret that, that's been a tough building to work out for years. So I think it would've been, I mean, this is water under the bridge, but I think it would've been wise if we would've set aside so much money a year and then had it, rather than say, hey, we're gonna take half a million dollars out of, out of reserves. But with that, with that said, this, this is a, this is a really, it's a decent estimate. And this is adding on, taking advantage of those walls that are already there, or those verticals that are already there, the red iron in the existing building.
The bid on the metal, it says bid on the metal building, connect to the existing, and then it says quantity. Each of these, I guess I'm confused by, you've, you've got the quantity, tons of rate, you come up with your one sixty, but then there's all these other, there...
It's all in, it's all part of his, it's all part of his, his rate, you know?
So he doesn't have anything, there's nothing separated towards what, what the costs are?
Keep in mind that this is just for budgetary purposes. I mean, when the bids come in, all of that detail would be, normally, would be in somebody's bid. So this was just to give us a guideline of how much could this cost us. Um, and, and I would, I would suggest adding, you know, twenty percent contingency on top of this and making it, and making it two fifty. But I think it's important to keep in mind what we really need there, you know, what we really need is a shop. So, the, uh, the wash bay is a nice to have. And, and that's great, but what we really need is a shop. So, I'm, and I guess what I'm getting at is to build a forty-eight hundred square foot shop for a wash bay and, uh, and a mechanics area where we've got one mechanic, eight buses, and there's likely going to be one bus in there at a time. And possibly two, you know, I don't think, I think we oughta look at saving some money. I mean, this, the size of this building was not all that far off, I guess it was forty, forty by eighty versus sixty by eighty. So the buses would go in a different, but I think, uh, I feel like the responsible thing to do would be to not build a gold building here, you know, do something that gets the job done, get them a bay, get them a wash, a wash bay and, uh, and a, an area of work on a bus, plenty of room to walk around, and, uh, save a little money there.
So does this bid address all of ten points of Larry's...
Well, it's not a bid, that's what...
Okay, this is...
All right, an estimate.
And the estimate, excuse me, because when I, when I look at those ten, nine out of the ten have to do with health and safety. I don't wanna compromise any of that. For example, the, a new building would allow to lift a bus higher than the safety, safely and completely do service and inspections, would, would this...
Larry, were you up there when they did the, the, when they came and, and measured and did their stuff for the bid, or for the estimate?
Not this, no.
Uh, that was Rodney Case, the second governor.
Okay, yeah, he didn't put this together at that time, this has been put together since then? But I was up there when we walked around.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's been a couple months ago.
And did he, we talked about the, um, the water in those concrete, what is it called?
The, the red iron pillars have concrete poured up around them right now.
Right.
As a water shedding apparatus.
Yeah.
That needs to be peeled back and, well, it's gonna have to go anyways.
Yeah.
It's in the way of attaching anything to it.
Right.
But see what, what kind of dam...
Didn't make any comment about it.
So why are you, Case, not bid when this was open for bid in the fall?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
He's really smart, I understand.
Yeah, he's a good builder.
Maybe, I'm just wondering if that's why he didn't...
Well, we got three bids when we advertised for bidding. And I think we'd leave ourselves in a big legal quandary if we, I mean, we would have to tell these companies and reject the bids, and then we'd have to go back.
Now, we've talked about this a couple of times, and Keith is gonna remember this. When we decided we were not going to go with Luminouch, and we were gonna look at, you know, get a couple of, a couple of bids of... When we decided we were not going to go with Wimanooch, and we were going to look at, you know, get a couple of, a couple of bids of, hey, how, can we modify this? Then we killed that idea. I mean, if we need to go back to the minutes, um, I suggest we go back to the minutes.
Killed the idea.
The idea of just going with these bidders that already, that already bid. You know, we were going to reopen it for bidding. Keith, do you recall that?
Are you even going to call and tell them that she rejected all the bids and you're going to do something?
We posted on the website that we were exploring other options.
Okay. Okay, so it doesn't hurt, I mean, Wimanooch, they have, keep in mind, they had a six hundred and sixty thousand something dollar bid. And then they said, oh, I think we can knock a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off of it. Well, that's not a bid. You know, it's, we need to, yeah, I mean, they can always come back and bid on this. So to just, to look at something else doesn't mean that Wimanooch isn't going to look at it.
But this is not a bid, I?
No, this is to give us budgetary numbers. This is what, which is a common thing to do in construction. You know, you, you get out, you go out and you get some budgetary numbers and then you know, you know, what the bid should be roughly as they come in.
And that's what we did with Larry, leading up to asking for bids. We asked for estimates and we had some rough numbers. Yeah, Larry?
Just going over this little estimate here. We've come up with quite a few things that are going to add money if it's not put into right now. There's no provision for any office, break room, tool storage room. There's no exhaust evacuation provision, no lighting. The floor drains for the wash bay, the sand trap that accompanies that, and a septic system that will go for the bathroom because the septic and the sand trap vacuum separate. And we'll be doing so far.
And it may not be on here, Larry, um, and, and maybe it's something that he thought of. But I would have to take those things back to him and say, I?
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just saying, you know, I don't want to get fixated on this number when these things here, just without studying anything, without drawing anything, these things just popped out that, hey, these, by the time they add up, that's a lot of money sitting there. And to fixate on this number, we could be in trouble later and say, oops, we didn't do this, or we need to add this. I think we need a set of plans when we actually build.
Well, and you wouldn't get that when you're getting, getting budgetary numbers, and you wouldn't get a set of plans. But there again, I had mentioned this in the last move, this company that he gets most of his buildings from will do the plans for seven hundred dollars. Now, I don't know to what depth, but that's another thing I'd have to ask him.
I think the three original bids came in so far apart because we did have a design build instead of just, whatever this is.
Instead of, instead of having a black and white plan, this is what we want.
Everybody bid to this.
Yeah.
We had a design build, which gave everybody their own opinion on what they thought we needed, without asking us what we wanted to do. You know, the one bid that was nine hundred and something, he had two way three phase in there for electrical power. Something we don't want, we can't afford, we're not going to use. I mean, it was a very expensive piece that just was useless. So, I mean, we need a black and white set of plans that everybody can bid apples for apples and then get actual numbers that way.
And, and we had that originally when we went in? No, we didn't, we didn't.
But it's three completely different ideas, because they, they didn't start out with, here's your set of plans, give us a bid. It was, they designed it.
This is what we're looking for, decide.
They listed everything we wanted in the facility, and then those who were interested showed up for a tour of the property and asked a bazillion more questions, and they went back to their offices and drafted up plans and sent them in as bids. A couple of things, one is, um, you know, you say we haven't been saving for this, but for ten years, we've been saving in the reserves for, for anything that, any one time that, for ten, consider the school years.
Is that, is that, and maybe, maybe this is just a misunderstanding, so when you save this for something, that's where it goes? It doesn't go into a holding?
That's one place it can go. It's because they are not designated for anything. It's ready for, say, boilers blow, roof caves in on the gym, in the middle layer, and you've got to spend hundreds of thousands, you have it.
So ten years ago, sorry, we're, ten years ago, five years ago, were you saying, we're going to save for shop?
For the last two years. We've known that, and we couldn't even touch this last year. Financially, the state was upside down, education, and it was a terrible year to do anything. We had to cut back on a lot of big dreams and put things on hold like this facility, because it was two years ago when CD said you have to build something that you can do inspections in, you can't do inspections here. The other thing that I want to point out, I just want to build something that's going to be adequate for a long term, like for growth. I want this to be done right. I don't want to do, I'm, I'm just, this sounds like very quickly down to a quarter million, and then there's possibly a few more things. It could go to three hundred. You know, we're, we're getting closer to five hundred. I just, I want to build something that I'm going to be proud of, a standalone facility. Uh, my experience with school buildings, when you scab on anything, um, you run into problems. And it winds up costing more than you think it's going to cost. A standalone facility is, is the most straightforward, uh, accurate cost that I've, that I've experienced with the school buildings down here. Uh, meaning that you know what it's going to cost going into it, you're not attaching to something, and you're not going to discover that it's, you can't attach what you thought you were going to attach, or whatever, and it's going to cost more.
You know, that doesn't even make any sense to me. Um, and, uh, other people may think the same way, who's been in construction, because several of you guys have, but, um, I mean, you can add on to anything and figure it out. I guess, I, I'm most concerned about spending five hundred thousand dollars, because we want a new building. When we, when all we really need is a shop. If we're looking at, what do we really need? The most important thing that we need is a shop. The wash bay is going to be nice, but it's not critical. You know, it's, as Larry said last month, the bus drivers are going to wash the buses more often. Great, they still wash the buses now, but, you know, and I'm just going to say this, it, it, it seems like maybe, let's say this is three hundred thousand, maybe that two hundred thousand is better spent somewhere else. Maybe, maybe this isn't the right time to be putting a half a million dollars into a, into a new building. Maybe what Eddie was, was saying, there's some truth in that, that we're, you know, losing some, losing some students. So maybe that, maybe because of the turnaround, we'll lose even more. You know, the, the, the thing is, we don't know what next year's going to look like. Can we give Larry what he wants, get him a wash bay, get him a shop without making it the Taj Mahal and save a little money? That's, that.
Well, I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily get Larry what he wants, but the district, but when I'm looking at these ten again, all of these ten, when, when this becomes a bid, would all of those ten be addressed? Improving water drainage, adding inside wash bay, all of those?
Those are additions.
Add this, add this to the requirements that you're concerned about, add them to the requirements of the bid, so that everybody has to, okay, yeah, okay, we need to. This will ensure room growth for fifty, next fifty years. Well, you know, who knows what the growth is going to be over the next fifty years? ADA bathroom, that's, that's simple to address. New building will meet OSHA regulations. Uh, will allow us to lift the bus high enough, and it has to be designed that way, um, if that's what you're asking for, and that's going to be part of the, part of the, uh, the bid requirements. This has got to be high enough ceiling to raise the bus, safer, easier place to maintain their fleet. I mean, that just goes with a new, with a new building, because it's in a new location. I mean, I guess what I'm getting at, I don't need to go through every one of these, but, yeah, I would say so. Anybody who's going to build, we can say, we want to make sure that you do this.
And that's part of the things you, you put out there too in the bids for more, is possible to do.
I have a question. Is there a lift in that building now? So the buses are, how do you lift them?
There, we have an end, well, they built an end bay, which we do, the most, uh, northern bay. Then realized they didn't build it tall enough, so they cut the center of the ceiling out, raised it six inches. And we have an end lift, which basically is a bumper lift.
Picks up the front of the bus?
Front or the rear, not at the same time, one or the other. Well, they had to cut the ceiling out so that we had enough room to raise it up to where you could actually get under there. You still can't actually pull an item out. If you had to pull a rear end or pull a transmission, you don't really have enough height to make it happen.
So we're not talking about lifting the whole bus six feet off the ground? We just need enough room?
Yeah, so six feet, yeah, you will.
But I mean, you don't have a? Talking about having a trench too underneath that you can walk.
I have, I've given up on the trench. A drive-on four-post lift is more universal. If you build a trench, and it happens to be the two of us in it right now, we're both five foot six. And in ten years, you get somebody else into a six foot tall, and they're walking around like this because it was built for us. Whereas a four-post lift, you drive on it, you can infinitely adjust what your height needs to be. And it doesn't go into the concrete work and dirt work that the pit is going to be. I, I don't think it was a good idea. I think going back to the flat floor and putting a, a four-post lift on, there's going to be a better idea. Now, this is not a lift like you would see in the Chevron gas stations where they had the big hydraulic cylinder.
Oh, I know.
This is all mounted on top of the slab.
How many times have we ever even pulled the rear end or the board or anything?
Since I've been here in two and a half years, not yet.
It doesn't cost them to get a bid. They didn't charge you for them. Get a bid.
I guess that.
The concern is what are we going to bid on? Are we going to lean to attachment or the standalone? The standalone has three bay doors, which is what we'd like to build. The attachment on has two bay doors. It costs less because it gives you less. So that's, I mean, if we're going to bid, that's kind of a big discussion, what do you want to, what do you want to bid on?
One of the biggest, one of the biggest reasons I asked for the wash bay inside is to get rid of the ice that we have outside. During the winter, this has been a very national, we haven't had much. But normally, we have a lot of ice out there, and when you're trying to wash water on top of ice and you're walking around, it's dangerous. I don't want anybody else getting hurt, and I really don't want to postpone washing because we're on muddy roads and you pretty much, you just got this little ball of mud running down the highway you can't see out of, so you're out there with brooms scratching the windows off to see what they're doing.
It's so this, this one here doesn't have a wash bay?
Yeah, it does.
Does have a wash bay?
Yeah, it's forty by eight. I mean, this is still a big, this is still a large building. The standalone that Larry was talking about is six by eight. But maybe, you know, let me just throw up another idea, because I know, Larry, you want it to, to run north-south.
So if the sixty foot is actually the direction you drive in?
Right, yeah. You could still add on, take advantage of the existing building and come out that way and not have to go through a separate set of codes, building codes, because it's detached. And that's what I've been saying, is that, you know, there's EIBC and then there's an IBC. So when you attach a building, you use a different set of codes, which is easier to comply with. So we can still do that, we can still attach and come out to the north, but maybe, maybe we could get by with a a sixty by sixty. You know, we're not planning for growth fifty years from now. Let's add on to it. Steel buildings are easy to add on to. Add on to it when we need to. So you get that coming off the north like you are most interested in, you pull in like you're talking about. But we don't build something for four buses when we've got one mechanic and we're going to put one wash bay in there. Let's do something that's most economical. Seems like might be a good compromise.
Well, the question, so the question is, are we, are we trying to bid for adding on? And we know we can add on to that frame, that frame, the sound frame, it is?
I don't know until someone looks at it. I mean, Casey's looked at it, and he has some expertise in the field. You have a recommendation on table. If you want to make a motion second through, we can afford building this project with Wimanooch. If you want to go out to bid, um, give me a directive and move on to that.
Wimanooch is off the table.
They bid at the appropriate time, along with two others, and they were our recommendations.
That's right. If we go back through our minutes, that's done. We said we were going to send it out, we were going to look at another, and then send it out for bidding then. I think it would be irresponsible to just go back to one person who already had a six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar bid, and we know they can go down to five hundred. Well, this could be two fifty, maybe it, maybe it is three hundred, but why not save a couple hundred thousand dollars? I mean, if we're so concerned about, uh, poverty and, and whatnot, why are we so willing to toss away two hundred thousand dollars? I mean, it seems like, this is, this is frustrating. You know, if it was done responsibly, my company would volunteer, we would donate some stuff to do this. But if we go with something just because we have the money, we're going to throw it out there, there's, there's no way. There's no way, there's no way I would do it. There's no way I would help out.
And I don't know that you can, because you said on the board, so be careful of that.
If it's a donation, can I not donate something? I'm not sure.
It might be able to.
Let's, uh, let's move forward with some, something. My concern is when Vern told me about the Wimanooch thing, he said, he said, I can probably, this was just verbally over the phone, I can probably come down a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand on my bid, so I don't have anything from Wimanooch that says we're down.
Under five hundred.
Right, what, which, you know, because all I've gotten writing from him is a six sixty-three, so I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. Those were the original bids.
Well, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we come off of the existing building, heading north, we attach it to that building, we enter those bays like you would like to, Larry, and that we do something a little smaller uh, in the interest of saving some money, and that would be sixty by sixty versus sixty by eighty. And then we get a new set of, we get a new set of numbers here. And we can, we can get a budgetary set of numbers, or we can just have a design and then put it out for bid. I'm not sure what you'd like to do there, but I would say let's turn it, update this, coming off at a different angle, get a new budget for it, and then bring it to the board. So do I need to clarify that?
No, well, there's just a lot of specifics in it, but.
Alternatively, if, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant. I want to say that I am very interested in being responsible, fully responsible, but what, if, if you are proposing that we just build on, but we don't really know yet how much that would cost to, I'm, I'm not sure that I have enough information to even vote.
Well, we're not voting.
Or add on versus standalone, because if a standalone, if that bid were to come down and this turns out to be higher, then we should go with this standalone that's ready to be, you know, there for us ahead of fifty years. So I, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm ready to vote for a build on to versus the standalone, because I don't feel like I've got the information.
Well, we wouldn't be voting to do that right now. We'd be voting, well, we'd be, we'd be voting to add on, but still get a bid, but.
Your motion just was, was said, making a motion to add on and do this, so.
Okay.
If you.
You guys, can I ask, can I ask a couple of guys out there that have done this kind of thing? If you're looking at, you know what the building, the existing building is at the, at the bus's parking, correct? Correct? All right. So, I don't know, I'm assuming that you've worked with the IBC versus the EIBC, the existing international building code that you work with when you have an existing building. But in your opinion, would it be less expensive to add on to that building or to build a separate, a separate building? Anybody?
It's always cheaper to add on. Because you're tying into existing structure that's already there. But if you just get it, when they bid it, they're going to check it to make sure that you can attach to it and it's just structurally okay. That's part of their, when, when I go bid something, I'm going to look at it to make sure what I'm tying into is good. Because that's part of your bid. And you, you're going to bond them. You're bonding to do it, so. That's the, I mean, and it's almost always cheaper to attach. And steel buildings are awesome because you can just keep adding on. But you could do it every year if you want. You could add on three bays, four bays, five bays, to twenty-one bays. Just keep going.
Definitely.
Yep. They do it every day.
Maybe there's a way to adjust that. I'm just saying, it's just, adjust the motion to not be a motion of to build the structure with this, this speed. This add-on and I, is to get clear, a clear bid for what we need in order to do the, an add-on option that incorporates everything that we, we absolutely need. Doesn't mean it has everything. You know what I mean? As opposed to, we're, we're saying, you're saying, I'd like to get a bid, an actual bid. Somebody who can say the structure is sound to, to, to build on to. So, so you're not specifying sixty by sixty or, because you don't have that yet. We, we would be looking for a bid that adds on to that structure that incorporates the things that we need and would like and would be something we can use for fifty years. Whether or not it's two or three bays, but it has a wash bay. But, but I'm just saying like, instead of saying, I'd say, um, the motion to build this. Do you see what I'm saying? So if there's a way to adjust it towards, leaning towards the bid towards it, it might be easier to do.
Yeah, this wasn't necessarily a motion to build this. We would still have to go out and either get some budgetary numbers or design it and then send it out to everybody to bid on. So it was, it was more, let's change directions. Let's add on to this building differently than what this add-on was. Because this was going with the, with the east-west, the east-west addition for the whole depth of that building. What Larry's most interested in is turning that and coming off to the north. So, I'm not exactly sure how to rephrase that. Because you're not looking at, hey, let's compare the cost. Correct me if I'm wrong. You're not looking at comparing the cost.
We already have a general idea of the standalone building. Is that correct? You feel like we have a general idea. Minus that we don't have it in full writing, the exact amount. But we have a general idea what the standalone building is going to cost. What, what I'm saying is, if you're making a motion, I would make a motion towards a team bid for some form of specific plan. As opposed to I make a motion to build, to add on to this building. Like, you know, you're, you're making a motion first so that we can then pursue, pursue it. Yeah, you know what I mean?
I, I think we're on the same path here. So...
I take your point, I mean.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're thinking the same thing, though, really. So, let's see. How about if I make a motion to explore this option that we just discussed? And would you like to see that in a plan form?
We have to have something like that in order to get it actually to be...
But not budgetary. Because, I mean, because you could go back to this budgetary process. That's where I was headed. You know, we look at this again. We revise these numbers coming off of that building with what we discussed.
We need to know at this point if we can build on to that structure and that someone can do that soundly and that they feel that they can do that in the fashion that he was just speaking of. That's what we need to know, and this does not give us that.
And, but I know that he already knows because he's done it countless times. This builder already knows that we can do that. So if you're looking for that, I'm confident in saying we already know that.
We don't know, we don't have a plan. We don't have a plan or have a bid.
But what you, based on what, I understand. But what you're saying, we already know we can add on to that building. I don't think we need to explore adding on to it. You can add on to a building. I mean, we discussed that.
But there's still an issue about the concrete, right? I mean, we still aren't sure what happens when that...
Here's a concrete guy.
That concrete on the top of that steel does not, does not damage or deteriorate that steel in any way, shape, or form. But if there's water trapped in there, there could be some water damage. But if it was to shed water away, it's to keep water from settling on that concrete, on that post in the, and that's what it's designed to do. There, it is, if they put concrete over the top of it, it did not damage that post in any way. It does not structurally change the dynamic of the steel in any way, shape, or form. If there was water trapped underneath from the ground table up, I mean, then all of them are like that. But that's not, the concrete on top of, poured around steel columns on top of steel columns does not hurt because they all, every, almost every one of them has it in some fashion. It never has concrete poured up, up against them, around them, or whatever. It doesn't hurt.
So if you want a set of plans, though, I mean, we can do that. If your, if your goal is to, let's, based on what we discussed, let's go out, let's get up, let's draft it up and then have something that everybody could bid on. We could start right there.
We need, we need an option for, if, if we're exploring this option, we would need, I think, bids on this option, given the parameters of what you guys have decided is necessary and, and have a bid. Because this, to me, I know about them and I know everybody else does, but this, to me, does not give me the confidence that this is the number that we're dealing with. And, and so I, I, we need a bid, we need a bidding process if we're going to pursue. That's what I think.
And that was never the purpose of this, just to be quick. That was, this was only to say, hey, folks, this gives you an idea of what this could be done for.
And if you want to pursue this, then you need bids for what you're looking for.
And therefore, we need some, some drawing, some drawings. Okay, so I'm going to, with that said, I'm going to, I'll make the motion that, that we, 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 based on our discussion of coming off the building to the north, that we look at putting together plans. And we get, we get plans put together for a sixty by sixty building that would be attached to the existing building in that we, for the purpose of putting those, sending those plans out to bid. Does that make, does that make sense?
That was still specific as to the sixty by sixty.
If you have plans, it has, we have to decide on a dimension. We can't, you can't have plans without a size, so... We can add another twenty feet a couple of years from now. We can add twenty feet, twenty more five years from now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to think about that. I, I do, I think you build something that you're going to use and, and I don't, I don't think you keep tacking onto a building. I think you just build something that you know is, is useful for your district or what your, what your size is, what your average size has been.
Then we probably need a forty by forty, or maybe even a twenty by, you know, a twenty by sixty. Because there again, what he needs is shop space. The wash bay is nice to have. This gives him office space. It gives him a wash bay. It gives him, it gives him shop space.
Well, you can go back to your original recommendation on the table to go with Winuch and spend 500,000 on a standalone facility that's sixty by eighty if you want to. And we can start here right away. Or someone else can make a motion for something different, or you just die on the floor. And we don't build it. So if someone wants to make a motion for the original recommendation from January, and again, recommend it tonight, and then someone can second...
But Doreen said that we didn't actually have anything that had less than 500,000.
Less than 663.
The directive would be build it for less than 500,000.
Ah, I see what you're saying.
So that would be 490,000. If it's less than 500,000, so that means the first time they tried to steal 200,000, $7,000 from you guys. If they can do it for, if they give you a bid for 660,000 and they can drop that off, that means they're trying to steal that 160,000 is what that means.
And I think we would need some clarity because when he said, oh, we can shave that much off, what was he going to take out in order to get to that point?
They should have done that to start with. They could have done it then. That's what they should have started. His bid is 660,000. It's not 500,000. His bid was 660,000. So if they can do it for less like that without any kind of, then you, then at that point, it becomes a negotiation and then it wasn't a bid to start with. And if somebody's going to try to steal 150,000 right off the top, then that would just, I mean, I can't imagine anybody wanting to use a company. If he could drop it that much, he should have done it to start with. Because it was a bid. He should have just dropped that off. It shouldn't have been, yeah. That automatically should exclude them from even considering them for what you do your project if somebody's going to steal money from you. But however, how else can you look at it?
Let me say something. I think the basic problem is we all have a different idea of what we want. And we're not looking at what we need. You're sitting in a building right here that's been here forever. I don't know what it was before it was the Forest Service, but these used to be parked in the orange. And it functions fine. It's way huge, bigger than we need, good for fifty years. It's a remodel. Okay? I think what I've seen in this district is driving me crazy. Is we spend money on the wrong things. We spend money on cars. We spend money on trips. We spend money on per diem. We spend money on buildings. We need to spend money on education. You know, our teachers are the lowest paid in the state. But we have 500,000 to build a bus barn for what we think we need, but it's actually what we want. Why, why are we doing that kind of maintenance on buses? You know, we should be changing the oil. We should be changing everything.
But one thing for inspection.
Okay, you can do...
By state law, we have to do the CDE inspections, which means...
Okay, you can do an inspection and you just need a bay, department lesson, and a nice voice would be great. I agree with you. But you don't need sixty by eighty. You don't need forty by sixty, probably. You don't need a break room. You know, when I was in school, you come in, they started the buses, they made the run, they parked the buses, they went home, they came back, took off. They used to sit by the back of the school. They didn't have plug-ins. They didn't have cover. They didn't have anything. Then we built that building up there, bought that property. That was another regime. We needed to grow this monster. We put a building up there, an office for superintendent, a bus barn, bathroom. We don't use that anymore. We took part of that and we tore it out and threw it away and we moved down here. We need to think about how we spend money on things. Things aren't important. You know? The students are what's important. The teachers, getting treated fairly and paid for the work they do, that's what's important. You can inspect buses and change oil in two bays. If you sold that piece of property up there, you'd have enough money to build that little shop anywhere you wanted. But if you want to build a building, then sit down and figure out what you all want. One time, what do we need, not what do we want? Draw it on paper, get somebody to put it together, there's a plan and they get bids. And I think you'll be a lot closer to what you want than a design build, three different ideas.
So these are one-time dollars we're talking about. We can't put them into salaries. As Keith is suggesting, I would love to, but if we don't have the capacity to keep them up, if we put 500 in, you have to put 500 again every year for salaries. This is a one-time opportunity. There is a wave of funding heading to all rural districts and all districts in general that will help to backfill a lot, if not all of this funding that we're talking on spending. So we could very well be six months from now at the same levels of reserves that we currently sit. That's the nice thing about one-time expenditures. When you know the finance, financial picture looks good for one year, great. We can spend a little, it'll be filled back up. And Keith does have a good point. I mean, we need to decide on what we want to build. And I thought, we knew what we wanted to build back in the fall. I thought we had done research and we've got estimates. I've worked with Larry a lot on this, and this three-bay facility was what we came up with. And, and we went out to bid and we got bids. And I thought we were on track to go ahead and design, build, and get going.
It's four bays. And Larry, when he walked up, what I had said earlier, what Larry needs most is a shop, one bay, between needs. And I'm thinking, great, if we can add a, if we can add a wash bay to it and the buses get washed more often, great. Doesn't need to be sixty by eighty. So if Larry was looking at, what do I really need versus what do I really want? How would that change?
We need to draw it out.
Okay.
And you need to set a plan so that everybody can do something with it.
You need a shop. What else do you need versus want? That's the question, and that's exactly what Keith is saying too.
We need a wash bay to keep our people from falling on the ice.
So there's two bays.
One, one workman's comp case for falling on the ice will outweigh 500, hell, it will outweigh a million dollars real fast.
I've been up there and I agree that wash bay is absolutely, is absolutely necessary. I don't, I, I'm not arguing that.
From personal experience, I just going to have a million dollars on my net myself. It doesn't take long and you get hurt to spend a lot of money. I hate...
We're not, we're not trying to take that away on the wash bay.
I mean, I really want, if we're going to do anything, we need to do it to where it's safe, where it works. If we're not going to, then it must, I guess we won't, but I don't want to. See, that is an issue.
If you were spending your own money, just, what do you need? You want, you want a shop and you want a wash bay? What else do you need?
The reason for two bays for the shop is, if I understood correctly, two buses come in and you're swapping parts off them, other buses can go into that third bay.
Mostly, well, the, the third bay will be a wash bay. It could be used to work on stuff that basically is going to be designated to wash. The other two bays during the summer, you're going to have more than one vehicle in there at a time because you're doing inspections. You tear one down and you decide, okay, I need these parts. You don't have to put that back together, roll it out of the way, so you can bring it over and start. You're not waiting. You have another bay to start on the second one. With where we live, a week to get parts is not out of the ordinary. I am four days right now for an alternator. Very simple, ten-minute job, and I'm four days waiting for a part.
But you can't have a, you can't have two bays that are functional for that and one of them also being a wash bay as a, as a second option. of them also being a wash bay as a, as a second option.
During the summer, it's gonna be in the way. During school, it should be usable as a wash bay. If that's something we have to draw, has to get the floor drain to work, and not be in the way of working in there. When you have a grate, and you're trying to roll around a creeper, the grate just totally gets in the way. It has to be designed so you're not rolling over that grate.
But you're saying the summertime, it would be, what makes the summer different because you're not using the buses?
You do most of your inspections during the summer because everything's down.
Right.
And that way, you can tear them down.
So you wouldn't be using the wash bay to wash, you'd just be using it for tear down and that, but you're not using them at that time, so maybe it's not as, as crucial of a time for washing?
Right.
Except you set the rate, the drainage jets going over.
We have that issue right now. There is a floor drain that runs ninety degrees, and how you pull a vehicle in, and you get stuck in that creeper all the time. It's a bad view.
So what we seem to be talking about, just, I'm not making any assumptions, obviously, but is that we're looking at maybe revising the design and actually having a design to then put forth to bid? Does that sound just something?
Who's gonna do the design, and how much will it cost?
Exactly.
Well, steel companies, because any, any steel company that you buy the red iron from will draw up an engineer set of, an engineer set of plans. So if you're gonna buy the steel from somebody American, there's Standard, there's American Standard, there's Evo, there's hundreds of different, or not hundreds, but there's dozens of different red iron metal companies that will give you a stamped set of, of engineer stamped set of plans if you buy the metal from, if you buy the red iron from them.
And James, that's what Case Construction was gonna do on this.
Sure. Well, all, that's what, I mean, that's what...
Their building manufacturer was willing to do that very quick.
We just, we did one last summer that was, like I said, it was, was forty by hundred and twenty, and we just, we just picked one of the, one of the companies that gave us the most price for the red iron, and they sent us, they sent us three sets of stamped, you know, stamps, so, of engineers, of blueprints, they just sent them out to you, that's not...
So before we do that, we have to know what we want, though. We have to know not what we want, but instead of need, the dimensions. So, can you go by the three bays?
Isn't that a three-bay design?
It's four. Four, because the one is actually office, break room, bathroom. The one bay actually covers those, and in the back, it would house the air compressor room, large tool storage, floor jacks, in lifts, things like that, so you can push them out of the way and store them. And my thought is that that last room for tool storage would also be a lockable room, so you go to your toolbox in there and lock it up, because you're gonna have drivers coming in and out, and you can't hear until that was locked door. And if you're the one that spent your money in your toolbox, you've got to lock it.
Well, maybe we're gonna build this standalone building, but are you planning to turn the old building down?
No, it won't go there. It would go up on the high side of the property, so it will ice and water.
Well, we don't know what that other building is.
The old building would be used for...
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Maintenance is using a large portion of it now for storage, because they can't use it because the bus won't fit inside of it, it's not tall enough. The one section that is tall enough to get a bus in, he will be putting his, well, if he gets to use it, will get to put his service truck in there with his plow and such, instead of sitting outside in the snow, trying to take off in the morning. We've got the building, so we're gonna use it, instead of tearing it down and having it taken away.
Yes. Larry, I know you've mentioned this, but what is the advantage of the standalone versus the add-on? You mentioned it's because the standalone would be up on a hill where the ice...
They would both be built in the same piece of land. They're both, you know, where we park the buses now, the add-on would add on to that and come out, and the standalone would be right next to it.
I mean...
The roof line, Casey was talking about following the roof line that we have on the parking structure over the top of the new shop area. It's going to slope very fast. You're not gonna get as many high doors in there, because it's gonna slope off and come from, whereas the standalone had a single pitch to the east, so that all the snow, water, whatever, ran off the back of the building towards the fence line, and then it would be diverted away from the driving area, away from the walking area.
The add-on does the same thing if you add it on to the north, like we've been discussing. Because I was thinking of the orient, orienting the building the same way that you want it oriented.
Okay.
So it would just tie in there.
Then we just have to figure out how to get these two roof lines...
Yeah, just extend your roof line to the, to the...
The roof line doesn't look like that, though. The wood gets peaked. Like, it's okay, you could...
You'd extend it to the peak.
You can't extend it to the peak. If you extend it to the peak, you're coming out, unless I'm not visualizing this right. Right now, the peak faces west.
Yeah, if you're coming in like this, you come up against the building, and then you continue on.
Okay. The biggest problem I see with that is we now have snow and water dripping to the front of the building, whereas the single slope that I'd asked for pushes it all to the back and diverts away.
You were, you were proposing a sixty-foot shed roof that all goes to the back.
Yes. I didn't know you had a shed roof, I just called it a single slope.
That's within the three bays.
It would look very similar to what the city built down here, but...
Yeah, the town shop down here.
The town doors. That is the basic design. Your doors would be on the west side, the rough slopes to the east, behind the building, and your water's diverted away backwards, instead of up front where you're working and driving.
If you revise the plan and then open it up again for bids, and you were very specific about that and all of the other things, would it matter if the bids are an add-on versus a standalone, so that we could just say, okay, so...
I'm not a contractor, I have no idea.
As long as it has, it meets these criteria?
That's what we need, is a set of plans. If you wanna rebid like this, we need a set of plans to say, this is what we want, so that everybody bids that way.
But it, but it can't be bid for a standalone and a, and a...
That's, that's two different apples.
Yeah.
That's an apple and an orange.
Two, I'll take your, you could take that, but you have to pay for two.
Yeah.
So what should we be getting bids on then? I don't think we can get bids with the drawn, we need a drawing.
We need to decide when we're gonna attach your, if you're gonna draw.
I don't know, construction's... I'm not the champion.
I'm willing to try this one more time. I'll make a motion that we get a set of plans for sixty by sixty, add it on, these plans would attach this building to the existing building, and we'll leave it at that to not conflict here.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
If we don't have a second, is there a better idea?
Yeah. Again, I'm asking if you have a set of criteria, and it doesn't matter if it's an add-on or a standalone, but you have this set of criteria, and that's what you're asking for a bid. Whatever comes in, comes in. Sorry. You can't do that without a drawing now. Yes, well, and give the... If any, two drawings. Be any of them, be any attached. But, but you need to start with your criteria, which I think you've got.
Because the basic criteria was put into the first request. It's basic, it's not down to the brass tacks, but the basic criteria was put in.
I think the criteria, if, if we're gonna start all over on this adventure again, I think the criteria is a bay drawing. That's, it's, this is what we want.
And we have drawings in the bids.
We do have drawings? We have drawings.
In the bids.
They're all different.
They're all different.
We have three drawings.
Because they were design-built, each contractor did their own thing as to what they thought we needed or wanted. We didn't have our own thing that said, this is what we want.
Right.
Your business. We didn't have that.
Okay, so they did what they could do with, okay. Can anyone obtain drawings for a standalone? Can anyone, can we get these, is there something we can do?
Someone could make a motion, put my recommendation, and we can go forward and say, build it.
But wow, hey.
No, somebody else could.
I understand. I'm just saying, instead of dying after all this discussion, I want to move forward. Move forward with something. I can, well, you did, John did. Why don't you make your something on our policy, with this, that I think...
Because I questioned that when I was first on the board, why the president was making motions, and there is something that they can't.
If we take your recommendation, though, and we're not sure if one of each could come down, the price, I'd use the motion if they stay with them. I'm not sure.
Your motion would entail that we would work with them with five hundred or less to build the project, and then we would go forward and update shit every month, every meeting, how things are going. And that's how it works.
They tried to steal a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from you guys. How unfair could that be? They tried to steal a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from you. Your bid was six hundred and sixty thousand. So if you're saying you could work with them and get them down under that, then you're just negotiating with them, you're not negotiating with anybody else. If you offer the same, say, hey, can you come down under five hundred thousand to all the other bidders? Because that's what you're, because that's what you're doing with one, not the other ones. So how in the heck does that make it right? They tried to steal a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from you guys.
That's why we're sitting here right now.
I know. How could you even entertain the thought of using somebody that would do that?
We're trying to find, trying to find something that we can do, because we don't, we don't have our drawings, we don't have, so we're, we're just trying to move forward some way. I think we need to make a decision on standalone versus not, I guess.
Positions are always cheap, too, and there's no, there's no structural difference.
There's still a motion on the table, there's still...
Can you make a motion, make a motion, I guess?
There's no second, someone else can make a motion that's different.
I think it won't, it won't be that much different, but I don't know if it's achievable. I don't know if it's achievable to, I mean, I don't understand, but then he's probably in plans versus... I think just one piece, I, I've got, in construction, my maintenance was, is, and whatever architect you have to design it, will take all of your criteria. The roof is the last thing that we're about to make, and architect will design it, so that that is done, how it's supposed to be done. Or he'll say, oh, that can't happen. So if you decide to do it attached, we've had architects draft it, then we will.
The harder question there is, is it gonna be an attachment or a standalone?
Right.
And then the third point, or second point there, is the cost is gonna start creeping up now. But if you'd like to get some architectural drawings, we can pursue that, just in...
What do you mean, the pace is gonna start creeping up?
Because if you go out for a separate architect to draft the plans to then go out and bid on, that's different than a design-build package that we went on, the original, with the original set bids. But it can be done, and I just need to know which direction you wanna go, add-on or standalone.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Ed, did you send us it?
Well, I, the thought that came into my head as Scott was explaining that, is if you do an architect, then you guys, it'll probably take a lot less time to figure out what you need. You sit down with him, and you say, you know, we need a wash bay, we need a mechanics bay, we need storage, and we need a bathroom and a break area. And we wanna stick to this menu. We're wanting to spend five hundred thousand dollars less. Real quickly, he's gonna be able to put something for you that's gonna fit your parameters. When you send it out as a, as a design build, and you've got all these great ideas of things you want, then they just look at it and say, boy, we wanna give them everything they want.
Right. And the way that you just said it, sounds like it could be a standalone or an add-on.
I think that the size was probably what was killing me. I mean, we really need to pick it up, what we need. Make it really nice, make it maybe that's what we need.
And this, this estimate would indicate we don't need a five hundred thousand dollar building, so maybe we oughta say three hundred and fifty thousand. And if we got one for two hundred, and if we added a contingency, and we added another fifty thousand dollars for some unknowns, that's three hundred thousand dollars. I'm pretty certain we could get it done for three hundred thousand dollars. What's troubling is to spend five hundred thousand dollars. So...
Six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you're spending six hundred and sixty thousand.
Thank you.
Jesus.
Yeah, so I, I think that that would be the way, I mean, if you wanna, and don't, don't spend a lot of, you know, not a lot of detail, but tell them, you know, we've got this much money, and this is what we need.
Okay, how about, could I make a motion that we do hire an architect, given this criteria, doesn't matter if it's a standalone or an add-on, let's see what they come up?
With what budget? What do we want spent?
I think I see, do I have...
I say three hundred thousand.
We wouldn't. Well, that's, I mean, you could, you don't have to get quite there yet. What we could do is put it out there, RFP, for an architect to help us with this process. We would have three bids, at least, to bring back here in March, and hopefully we would have a recommendation. That matters always, but, you know, hopefully, we would come forward with some suggestions, and then you could decide which architect you wanna go with. And then you tell us, and then we hire that person, and we would work with them, and they would design what we need, if you want. And it only pushes it out another month or two, but we can wait two years for this, so...
How much is the architect...
We would have three bids at least to bring back here in March. And hopefully we would have a recommendation. That matters always, but hopefully we would come forward with some suggestions and then you could decide which architect you wanna go with. And then you tell us and then we hire that person and we would work with them and they would design what we need, if you want. And it only pushes it out another month or two, but we can wait two years for this, so.
How much is the architect bringing, adding the cost?
Well, we're gonna have bids and that's what we bring back to you in March to approve. It might be, it might be 5,000, it might be 10,000, I don't know. It could be anywhere. We don't know, if we ask.
I think it can't be an unlimited budget though. I mean, I think we gotta give them a number.
So I think that's the point. You're still saving a lot, sorry.
Yeah, so you made a point. 300,000, that's a starting point. I mean, it's, that's a, that's definitely. You're not, you're not really looking for that though. You're not looking for the, you're, you're looking for what? I guess if you throw out a number, it's true, then they're just gonna say that number.
Well, but maybe he'll tell you, you can't do that.
Right, right.
What you need is more money than, so you're gonna have to make that decision then, but.
We need that to be, apparently that's what we need to be told.
Yeah, we need somebody to look.
What if we put it out for bid with our criteria of what we want and asked an architect to bid on that to help us draft it? And then we'll have bids and we'll bring it back in March and we'll have some different numbers and we'll hear your chip of saying.
Okay, is that the gist, what you just mentioned?
I think that was your motion.
That was her motion. I'll second it. Thank you. Discussion? Okay, great.
Yeah, discussion, yes. I wanna go back to, that was the same thing you said the first time. I mean, they could, they could gold-plate it, you know, we're not giving them any idea that, hey, we're trying to work within a $300,000 budget. And just like Keith had said, just like Keith had said, you know, they could say, "Well, we can't, we can't get this out." I don't think you can build this for 300, but maybe you can do it for 350. I don't know. Let's give them a guideline, let's use that as a guideline too. Before this, if we had a $300,000 guideline. Because if you can't do it for that.
I'll move that to the motion. So I move that we hire an architect.
Oh, we're requesting bids.
Bid an architect.
All right. Using these criteria, keep it within 300,000. And that's what we're explaining to the. Is that getting anywhere close to?
And then maybe just the three bays, two bays.
Do we need to specify?
Well, wouldn't that be in the criteria?
Yeah, that would be part of the criteria.
But you, but you still.
Let's decide on that.
That's what he was trying to argue.
Yeah, I think, I think Larry could get what he wants with 60 by 60. I think.
Right. You definitely need an office in about that.
No, the plus is 40 foot long. That's 1200 square feet. That's 1200 square feet to put an office and a bathroom. I think that's plenty of room to put an office and a bathroom that has some storage. So let's start with that. Let's just start with.
We'll start with it and see what the architect. And I seconded it.
And you seconded it. I would like the whole motion read back, please.
Oh, make some fun.
Start from 45 minutes ago.
Okay. Oh, I didn't, she's taking the notes on that, but.
That's why it's recorded. No, I just had that you were requesting bids from an architect, with the criteria stated, either standalone or add-on with a $300,000 budget. And then you mentioned three bay 60 by 60. That's the notes I had.
That's correct.
Yeah, that sounds good. Oh, oh, good.
Okay.
Casey McKellen.
Aye.
Vanjie McCoy.
Aye.
Kay Phelps.
Aye.
Dee Prog.
Aye.
You got a trill, so.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda. Is anyone, does anyone wanna discuss any of these? It's just this here. It's just if you have anything you need to be.
Let's, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Did you wanna go off to discuss?
I move that the board approve and adopt the recommended actions for the items on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Discussion?
Um, Casey McKellen.
Aye.
Vanjie McCoy.
Aye.
Kay Phelps.
Aye.
Dee Prog.
Oh, yeah, aye.
You got a trill, so.
Aye.
Not used to my name, sorry. Don't go by that, I never hear that. Okay, and then strategic plan. I feel like we have presentations in this.
No presentations.
Student success, student culture.
She loves to present.
That seems good, in the interest of time.
And those guys are, we usually see what I'm doing at the end of this. So, okay, anything from elementary?
All of the reports are in your conference.
Yep. They're all in there.
Yeah, questions, hang on.
Anything, anybody wants to share on that card? Board reports and request, those is.
We meet next week.
Oh, cool. And then legislative, we have other ones. We've got a few things.
Legislative updates. There was kind of a neat thing last Wednesday, or no, it was yesterday. It was yesterday. Up at an elementary school in Aurora, about 400 or so, I think it was 400. It was a huge turnout for a big press conference about the superintendent's new formula for funding education. And they rolled it out and there were 45 supers and like 4,000 people there and there was a big splash in Denver. The neat thing is it would more adequately fund education for all of our kids because the formula hasn't been changed since 1994 and a lot has changed. So the new formula funds things like full-day kindergarten, which I'm very excited about.
That each of those little children are a whole person?
They're a whole person. We actually get full funding for it, if this comes through. But it's just, you know, a long road to go. There are some legislators who have signed on to this and are gonna try and get it through, you know, as a bill, works through, becomes, well, it's a long, sticky process. And there's a lot of debate to be had. But the neat thing was it was a big splash in press conference. The biggest press conference I have heard of around this type of work. It's kind of neat. Along the lines of legislators and that's.
Do a couple quick ones.
Sure.
There's a family medical leave insurance program that's being proposed, House Bill 18, 1001. And it's about providing partial wage-to-replace benefits to an eligible individual who takes leave from work to care for a new child or family member with a serious health condition. So, you know, it's probably not gonna pass, but it's a nice thought. And then also continuing the childcare contribution tax credit is up for re-upping it. And an interesting thing is that, well, it doesn't, it's of interest. They're, they're gonna report legislation that could create a special district to help fund early childhood, which means we could cross districts and go for funding with other districts, which there's buku special districts as it is, but none of them are for early childhood. So that, that's of special interest to us. I think that's about it.
I see that the town report, there are two people running for mayor and 11 people running for the positions that are open. So if you live in town.
Well, I heard there were, I heard 13 were running for mayor, but 2 are.
Originally, there were 14 people running, but when it came down to it, there's two for mayor and 11, so there's only 13. The first number I heard is 13.
11 for four spots.
11 for four spots.
Okay. Who's the two running for mayor? Do you know?
Jerry Whitten and.
Chad Wheels.
Chad Wheels. I cannot remember his name.
Or Wheels.
I have no idea who he is.
And if we don't like the entire.
Jerry Whitten, yeah, you have to be in town.
Yeah, you have to live in town. That's why we moved to town.
Do you live in town, so you can vote?
Okay. Where do you do that?
You can mail it, you should come in your mailbox.
You can mail it to you.
I've never seen them. Does that always happen?
Are you registered?
Yes, I am. Well, I haven't really called mayor. It just is a separate thing that shows up.
It's in April.
That's exciting.
Make sure you're registered.
I am, I am. I always vote. I just didn't realize a mayor. How often is the mayor thing?
Two years. Every two years.
Oh, it is. Oh. How bad was the mayor for Ellen?
No, but he's turned one of the times.
Oh, okay, I see. But didn't, it was more than two years? He ran.
It was just four different times. It was two years at a time.
Oh, okay.
No, it's a, it's a four-year thing and it's limited. And then, and then if he ran again, he has to wait for two more years.
Oh, I gotcha, I see.
Just to wait for four years.
Board request for future.
And they have got applications for a town administrator and last night they were going over them. They checked some backgrounds and stuff and one had already backed out, so I don't know how many they.
There's three of them gonna be interviewed on the 21st.
What?
Three will be interviewed on the 21st.
Yeah, so I don't know how many they.
They have the opportunity to, if they wanna come in and interview, though. Three people's been offered, which I've seen.
And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Board request for future agenda items.
I don't really have an agenda item, but I just wanted to mention, I just found out today that Jenna Bush Hager is coming to Durango on April 25th at 6:30 at the Fort Lewis College Community Concert Hall. Tickets are on sale for $30 to $55, depending on where you sit. And it's kind of a cool opportunity.
And that's cool.
Jenna Bush, she would, no.
No, no, she's talking about, yeah, go ahead.
Making a difference. No, she's talking about education and early childhood are her big things. That's why it really came to my attention. But she's also a contributing correspondent on NBC's Today Show.
Okay. I have just an idea, but we can not take my idea. We did last year, we did our executive session, this executive session, and I felt like it was rough. Is there any way we can do that separately?
Another night or another morning?
What's our, what's our timing deadline?
Yeah, it's due before March 1st. And usually it takes just about 20, 30 minutes.
I agree with Dee. It was pretty intense last year.
Also, you make it's more than 30 minutes.
It doesn't, it doesn't need to be, but it just.
You wanna set another thing?
I mean, I know that you guys don't want to. But I just, I.
This is a perfect time, but that, okay.
What about our?
That's what I was gonna say. What about to the linkage?
22nd.
Oh, boy.
Oh, the 22nd?
Oh, that's March. That's my.
The February 22nd is the linkages. It start at what time?
11. 11 to 5.
Well, Kay has a commitment on the day, that day minus that time. She is gonna be here for that time, but she has.
That, but I'll do what's best for everyone. My daughter's coming from Glasgow, so.
That's the day that she gets here?
She comes here Monday. She'll be here Monday. It'll be, she'll be here Monday. That's okay.
Because we're already convened.
So you're saying we would do this after 5 o'clock?
Yeah, we would like to invite the sessions.
We would do it, yeah, or, yeah, I guess. It doesn't matter. I just, it gets rushed. I felt like it was not, it was, did not go. I thought we could have been more productive if we did not do it at 9:00.
I agree, I agree.
And I am.
The linkage rule may be, I shouldn't be ready to do that, but that seems possible.
But it's pretty long, but it's not 5 o'clock at night.
I would prefer it, but I know it's not. I know I'm asking a lot. I'm just, I'm, I would like to have some time with it, I guess.
Because we did, did that and then someone wanted to change, wanted to bring it back for a discussion and.
We just got it.
It was, yeah, it was really intense.
I get hurtable after that. And it doesn't, yeah, exactly. But, but it didn't go well last time because I, I did feel rushed.
Because she was standing here at the end, trying to get out the door.
I'm just saying.
She was standing up.
I'm just saying, it's really, I think it's a really good opportunity, that time, and I just want.
That works for me.
Perfect, okay.
I make a, I make a motion that we.
Table.
Table the, thank you.
Sorry.
The executive session.
Table the executive session for superintendent evaluation until 5:30 on February 26th.
22nd.
For after, whatever.
No, no, you know, after linkages.
Yeah, don't say a time.
Because they, because when the last one ends so quick.
Do you have to set time?
We do have.
Yes, to get most of the time.
Do you wanna say 4?
But it's an executive session.
No.
But it's still.
Can we say 4?
Yeah, but people can be here before you go in the session. They can be here right after you go in the session.
So you guys coming back here.
I think you wanna do it here, it would be my song.
Yeah.
This could be all set up. You can move from the library to the library down here.
At 4:30.
But we have, there's a big chunk after school. I mean, last year it was my one or two teachers, but I don't wanna shortchange that.
There was only one teacher.
Well, but we do it from 3:35 with the teacher?
3:45 is 10 minutes of shuffle.
Okay, how about 4:45?
Yeah, but you gotta get that, so you gotta.
Just say 5.
All right, 5 to 5. I was just gonna be saying 5:30 so everybody had a chance to go to the bathroom and a drink and.
I think we'll have plenty, we'll have plenty of time, I know, because.
Are we going to do the teacher linkages away from school again?
I would just do it in the library because no one came when you did them away. It did not work.
I'd like to do it.
That way you're set up in the library from 11 to 5 at your home base, so much water, everything you need. So everybody will cycle through on campus.
Second.
Do you want a second?
Second, second.
Can I ask, back in December, you know, you borrowed a step for the staff that we lost in 2009. Is that still?
Either, when we did the budget, I forgot to ask. I have that information for you right here.
All right.
And it's gonna be part of our budgeting for going into next year.
I've got all the wages in that from 2002 in present and it shows what certified got every year and what classified ever done every year. So I mean, I give it to you guys now to review for the, or give it to the budget. So I mean, I give it to you guys now to review for the, or give it to the budget.
So maybe it's on rate already. It's going to be part of the budgeting this spring for, for next year's school budget.
I, I thought of that the other day. I thought I didn't pursue that when we discussed the budget.
Could you, you would miss the, well, it's not for this budget anyway. It would be for next year.
But see, Dory's prepared. She has it. Okay, thank you, Dory. Thank you.
We need a vote.
Sorry. Casey McKellen? Benji McCoy?
Aye.
Kay Phelps?
Aye.
Dee Proff?
Aye.
Deanna Trusson?
Aye.
Actually, we're the identical team here.
So I, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Didn't even have to see her.